Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order and invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here tonight. First order of business that we have on our agenda, our number of recognitions starting, we'll have Sandy present.
All right. And I'm going to ask our students who are both commended and our semifinalists to kind of stand up by the microphone, please. I know there's at least three here. All right. We're very pleased to share with you this evening our commended and our semifinalist candidates. I want to ask you to turn this way, though. Yeah, thanks. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. About 1.5 million juniors across the country entered the 2014 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2012 preliminary SAT, which served as an initial screener for the program. The nationwide pool of semifinalists represent less than 1% of the US high school seniors. It includes the highest scoring entrance in each state, and the number of semifinalists in a state is proportional to the state's percentage of the national total of graduating seniors. From the approximately 16,000 semifinalists, about 15,000 are expected to advance to the finalist level, and we won't know that until February. So we may see some of them back if they earn that level as well. So, we have five. On our list, we have two semifinalists in the district, Jack Cadillo and Emily Schertz, both are here this evening, and commended Leo Moes, who's also present, Abigail, you guys can help me, Opsa, and William Skinner, Willie Skinner. So, I've asked them to come up and talk a little bit about all the things that they're involved in at the high school level, and if they have plans for next year beyond high school. But first, we just want to say congratulations. And we'll need you to speak into that microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Emily. I'm involved in the choir department at the high schools, Wells Wind Ensemble. I did marching band. I was in varsity in tennis this year, and I'm hoping to play soccer this year, too. And I am planning on going to either U of M or UW-Madison, so, yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next? You can raise that up. You might still have to bend down.
I'm Jack, and I'm on the cross-country and track teams at the high school, and I'm also part of Quiz Bowl and NHS. And I haven't really decided where I want to go to school next year, but I'm pretty sure I want to do some kind of engineering, possibly chemical.
Very good.
I'm Leo. Personally, I'm involved in Peer Helpers, and I was involved in band for three years along with Jazz Ensemble. Unfortunately, I don't have time for that this year, so I had to cut it out of my schedule. I am the president of our chapter of NHS at the high school, and along with that, I'm like trying to incorporate new things this year into my schedule, so we'll see. And next year, I have absolutely no idea where I'm going to school.
Well, congratulations. Very proud of you, and it's particularly interesting to note that it's more than just the classroom, it's other activities outside the classroom that you're involved with as well. So, very good, and congratulations again, and good luck. Okay, moving on, then.
Next, I'm going to ask our honors musicians to come up front, please. And while they're coming forward, I'll give you a little background. The Wisconsin State Music Association has auditions each year, and there are six state honors groups. So there is a middle school orchestra, a middle school band, middle school choir, then a high school band choir and orchestra as well. So way back, because you'll look at some of these names and go, "Well, hold it. I know so-and-so is at the high school." Well, that's because they auditioned in eighth grade. So, they start out as eighth grade, well, no, there's going to be a variety of ages, but they start out in middle school auditioning, and they can be selected only for one. You can audition for all three at each level, but you can only be selected for one of those. So, high school students audition at one of the state sites the end of January, first part of February, and middle school students audition at one of the state sites in early April. They're considered blind auditions. That means the judges don't know your name, they don't know what school you're coming from, they just listen to the students, and they know those selections are off the state list. The high school students spend a weekend of their summer in preparation of the music then with one of their guest directors, and then they meet again and rehearse in October and perform at the state music convention. And the middle school students meet one and a half days in October and practice in Madison, and then they, too, perform at the state music convention. Over 1,300 high school students auditioned, and approximately that same number for middle school, and 350 of each were selected for the performance groups. So, we also, at the teacher level, our teachers are highly involved in this as well. Carol, you come on up here, too. I know one of them is out there. So, in the past, high school and middle school coaches have been Andy Hayes, Jack Young, Aaron Hilden, Connie Root, and Carol Dolly. Connie has served as the state middle-level band coordinator, and Carol is currently serving as the state middle-level choir coordinator. So lots of involvement. And Connie has also been a chair as well. So there's lots of involvement. You can see the list of middle school students. Carol, are these all middle school currently here?
Two, three of our middle school kids here. This is one that's now at the high school.
Now at the high school.
Jeremiah, and Maggie, and Luke.
All right. So let's do the same thing. Luke, if you'd start us out, if you'd go up to the microphone, tell us your name, what grade you're currently in, and then if you just have one highlight of your experience in Madison, please.
Okay. I'm in seventh grade right now. My name is Luke Beckmeyer, and I very much enjoyed staying over and singing all the time. I haven't really stayed at a choir area before.
Very good.
Congratulations, Luke.
My name is Maggie Smith. I'm in seventh grade, and one thing that I really loved learning was some of the special techniques that our director taught us.
I'm Jeremiah Tank, and one thing I really enjoyed about it was seeing like other techniques that other students used to apply to my own technique as well.
I'm Abby Zappa, and I'm in ninth grade, and I really liked meeting new people and the music that we played while we were there.
All right. Thank you. Carol, any comments from your perspective?
It's nonstop, and it's just every minute is filled with music and friendship and technique and pizza.
All right.
It's a great, great time.
Yes. Congratulations to all of you.
Congratulations. Okay, we're moving on then to the final recognition energy cost savings. Tim?
Okay. Jim, we'll have Jim Staskel and his staff come forward. We're approaching the $1 million mark in energy savings since we started measuring in September of 2008. And a large part of the reason for those savings are some of the people standing in front of you. Jim Staskel, Mark Klonderman, and the rest of his staff, which he'll introduce. But I think we just want to take the opportunity to recognize the efforts of the Facilities and Grounds Department. And so with that, I'll let Jim talk from there.
Thanks, Tim. I guess I'll start with some introductions. Some of the folks I have with me tonight, I have Blair Gunderson, who is the head custodian at Holton Elementary; Doug Miller, head custodian at North Hudson Elementary; Mark Klonderman, Assistant Supervisor Buildings and Grounds; and Mark Revard, head custodian EP Rock. I do need to mention some people that are not here today because they're instrumental in these savings as anyone else. And those people are Perry Scobie, the head custodian at the high school; Steve Brown, the head custodian at the middle school; Roy Rose, the head custodian at Willow River Elementary; Tina Bar Larson, head custodian Prairie Elementary; Jeff Pingell, head custodian Rivercrest Elementary; Bob McRoberts, district-wide maintenance; Wayne Scobie, district-wide maintenance. These are the folks that are really on the front line of implementing the projects that we've done to accomplish these savings, and more importantly, the daily operations of the facilities. Just scheduling the buildings such that we're optimizing our efficiencies, maintaining the equipment, filters, belts, pulleys, everything that's going to keep things running as efficiently as they can. I have a short list of some projects that we've accomplished over the last several years. We've done all of the high bay lighting conversions in the gymnasiums. We've done several district-wide lighting conversions, first a T-12 to T-8 conversion, and then after that, a relamping of the entire district from 32-watt T-8s to 28-watt T-8s. And in conjunction with that project, we did de-lamping, where we actually removed some lamps from the fixtures. We did a building automation system upgrade at the high school. We did domestic hot water system conversions at the high school and middle school. We did a pool lighting conversion. And just this past summer, we did a boiler replacement at Holton Elementary, where we upgraded our existing 80% efficient boilers to 95% efficient condensing boilers. Those are just some of the projects. We continue to schedule energy-efficient projects every year as part of our building project schedule and hope to increase these numbers beyond the $1 million, or close to $1 million that we've saved to this point. And that number's just going to continue to grow as the years pass. All of these projects were very, very attractive paybacks, most of them under three years.
Jim, and gentlemen, I just need to say, this is not, this is no small task that you've just accomplished in the last five years. And I think it's just another example of a district that takes seriously the responsibility of the resources that we're entrusted with by this community. You fellows have led the way in this, and I know that there's been a lot of others that are involved in this type of project, but we must have nearly $100 million of assets in this district when you think of all the facilities and so forth. And many of these facilities are not new facilities. So it's a tremendous accomplishment. And I think you guys, I just want you to know how much we appreciate everything that you've done, the work that you've done to this, and it's taken, you know, it's taken a monumental effort, and sometimes it's an effort to change people's behaviors as well. And that's not always easy, but sometimes that's the hardest part.
That's right.
So, I just want you guys to know that we're not up, we don't have you up here just to, you know, just because we want you away from home. It's because we really do appreciate what you've done. Keep it up, let's hit that $1 million mark and go on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, well, moving on then to the superintendent's report, Fourth Annual National Advanced Placement Honor Roll.
Well, Mr. President and board members, I am so pleased to be able to talk once again about our advanced placement results and the success of our students and our teachers. You'll remember the board report on SMART goal results. We continue to talk about our advancement in AP this last year. We had 10% more students taking AP courses than in the previous year. We had 36% more exams being taken, and we maintained that passing rate of 80%. And certainly, that is due to the dedication and the talent of our teaching staff. So with that, we talked at that time that we were anxious to have the Fourth Annual AP Honor Roll come out, because we were very hopeful at that time. And as a result, it has now been published, and we were extremely pleased to see that once again, for the fourth consecutive year, that Hudson has been named to this honor roll with the 477 districts across the United States and Canada. They're being, we are being honored, and those districts are honored for increasing access by more students to AP coursework, and also by increasing the number of scores above three, three or higher on AP exams. This isn't easy when you increase access to more students. You know, it's hard to maintain that passing rate, but it's because of our own students challenging themselves and the talents of our teachers supporting their efforts. So, you know, I'm very pleased to say, once again, this honor roll has been in place for four years. Hudson has been on that honor roll for each of those four years. And there's one other part that I just announced to staff this afternoon. That last year, I said there were three districts in the state of Wisconsin who had been on the honor roll for three years: Hudson, Kimberly, and Green Bay. This year, there's one district, certainly that's Hudson, and we're so thrilled that this is a way for our students to succeed, and our teachers as well, to have their success recognized. So Hudson is the only district in the state of Wisconsin, I want to emphasize this one more time, that has been on the AP honor roll, the national honor roll, for four years in a row. Certainly a great achievement. I would like to recognize the people who have done this work, certainly these talented educators, and as I say your name, please come forward so that you can be recognized. So Steve Cosman, AP Calculus, and I'm not sure they're not all here unfortunately, but I still want to give them credit for their work. Vicky McGlaughlin, AP Chemistry and Physics, I know I saw Vicky. Steve Solom, AP Statistics and Computer Programming. Chuck Bublitz, AP German. Steve Kennedy, AP Language and Composition. Lori Harmon, AP Literature and Composition. Bob Smith and Jason Swaveley for AP Psychology. Anne White for AP Spanish. Mary Moklinsky for AP Studio Art. Matt Friedel for US Government and Politics. John Amon and Jay Cluse for US History. I wish that we had all of our AP teachers here, but these are absolutely talented educators who have helped our students be successful with this rigorous level of coursework, proving that they are college and career-ready, and certainly, we thank them and congratulate them for this level of success. But it's also, I'd like to recognize Sandy Kovac, who has advanced AP coursework throughout the district, and it's because of her leadership that we continue to increase our coursework. We have 13 courses in advanced placement, and we have nine virtual courses. I believe that we would have even more AP courses if we had more space at the high school, because I know there's more interest in some of those courses. And particularly, one of the courses that is often part of that AP suite of courses at a high school, like a high-performing high school like Hudson, is AP Biology. And because of our lack of the science labs and space, we're not able at this time to really offer that except at the virtual level. So hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to resolve that and increase our coursework as well. So certainly, we look to these teachers and their work, and certainly thank them, and recognize that, because it is a high level of rigor that they have in their courses, in their classrooms, every day. And also, we need to recognize all of our teachers, support staff, and administrators from early childhood through the high school, who have helped to prepare our students to be ready for this level of coursework. And so I would also congratulate them, and thank the board for their support of this level of rigor continuing to advance at Hudson High School. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Nobody wanted to make a speech? So, okay. Okay, we'll move on then to the reports, starting with Educator Effectiveness update. We'll start with Bruce, and then Dave Granbo.
Yeah, at our personnel meeting that we had on last Tuesday, it was, Mr. Granbo gave us progress report. We'll pass it over to him and have us walk through the update that we will hear about.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. First of all, I'd like to invite Amanda McCarthy up to the table. Amanda is a fifth-grade teacher at Hudson Prairie and has been very instrumental in our work with educator effectiveness, and she'll be sharing some of her perspective as we provide this progress report. Secondly, I want to apologize in advance, I'm going to be leaving immediately after this report, be traveling with some instructional coaches for training in Wausau, and I want to get an early start on the road, so thank you for that. So first of all, I want to be able to define for you a little bit of what we're talking about with educator effectiveness. Educator effectiveness is a system of supports that are put in place for supporting teachers to continue to perform and to improve at ever higher levels. The primary vehicle within educator effectiveness is teacher evaluation, and the bulk of the report this evening revolves around teacher evaluation and the work we're doing to create the system for that. First of all, I want to provide you an update on the two laws and the statutes that dictate the work that we're doing at the state level and at the district level in regards to educator effectiveness. The first one there is about teacher evaluation, and this law essentially allows test scores to be included as part of the teacher evaluation system, and that was an important shift that was made that essentially paved the way for the educator effectiveness change. And then secondly, we have the educator effectiveness statute itself that dictated the work that DPI had to do in creating an educator effectiveness system at the state level. Part of that statute allowed for the development of equivalency models. An equivalency model simply means a different model, other than the one rolled out at the state level, could essentially apply for equivalency and then be included for consideration as an educator effectiveness framework. And tonight, we'll be sharing information about two different systems that we've been looking at. One is the statewide system, the other is one of the, or actually, the only equivalency model. The guiding principles behind the educator effectiveness system can be most succinctly defined by the 50/50 model. When we look at the 50/50 model, what we're talking about is 50% of the teacher's total evaluation based on educator practice or models of practice. That essentially defines those observable behaviors that a principal or associate principal would go into a classroom and observe a teacher engaging in, that would indicate that teacher has a strong understanding of the standards of solid instruction. That half of the equation is open to equivalency, and we are looking at one of those equivalent models, as I mentioned, happens to be the only equivalent model at this time. That input is not just observation, it's also based on input from the teacher. So teachers have the ability to essentially provide documentation, evidence of their progress according to those standards. And really, for the most part, this is similar to a traditional teacher evaluation system, very much like the one that we have currently, which is a solid system based on educator practice. The other half of that circle is the student outcome side. This is the new part, that is new within an educator effectiveness framework. This, for purpose of clarification, is not open to equivalency. Regardless of what system we eventually decide, the 50% of that circle that is based on student outcomes is consistent between the two systems. The data is going to be heavily based on student learning objectives, and in a few moments, Amanda will explain that to you. And starting in 2017, 18, state assessment data may be included as part of that system, and again, Amanda will be giving you a little bit more detail as we move into that. And with that, I will pass it to Amanda.
So as Dave said, when the original statute was implemented, we looked at the 50/50 model. 50% models of practice, teacher evaluation, 50% was the data, and as the statute came into place, the state formed what they called a design team. The design team was made up of the major stakeholders in education. There was representation from AUSA, the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, DPI, there was representation in the governor's office, colleges and universities, school board had representation, as well as the WAAC and the AFT, the teacher unions. The purpose of this original distribution was to guide training, district-wide, educator level, as well as to pilot different possibilities of laying this out in a school district, and then implementation. And so from the original distribution, teams were formed. There was a teacher practice team, a student learning objective team, a technology team, a principal practice team, and then these teams delved deeper into each of those specific areas to operationalize the vision of the design team. From that original work of those teams, for which I was a part of the SLO, Student Learning Objective, we've looked now at a different distribution, if you want to put that up. The current distribution still holds the 50% models of practice as it was originally intended, but the SLO has now taken on a much larger portion. The reason for that, there's actually multiple reasons. The first piece, the 15% of the state assessment, as the state moves into smarter balanced assessment, part of that assessment is grounded in what we're calling value-added. The ability to look more closely and hold parts of our data constant so we can more clearly see the data, and we won't have that valuated data for two more years, three more years?
Three more years.
And so at this point, the state assessment has come out, come out of the pie, but could, we'll plan to go back into the pie once we have that value-added data. The other 15% of district assessments, what DPI had for feedback was that districts didn't have consistent assessments, and also, it became an issue with teachers wanting to use the district assessment to measure the effectiveness of their SLO. And so you come into a goal-setting process using two different sets of data for two different pieces of the pie. We slang it double-dipping, but you end up with statistical issues in your data. And so the pie now has gone to 45% based on the SLO, the Student Learning Objective, which really is similar to a SMART goal process. It is mined much further down at the teacher level, where the teacher determines a baseline, sets a goal on that baseline, and the entire process is grounded in student achievement. Most goals are growth goals, so we want to see, this is what I want the child to do, and at the end of the year, did they make the growth we expected them to do? At this point, every, or next year, everybody will have two SLOs linked back to, most likely, a building-level goal. The other two and a half percent that you see in the distribution is district choice, and districts can determine what that looks like, and then the other two and a half percent is a reading goal, K-8, and graduation rate, 912. So currently, on the teacher, the models of practice side, we have two pilots. Like Dave said, one is out of CSA-6, and one-third of our staff, three elementary buildings, one-third of the middle school, one-third of the high school, and we are in a second year of that pilot. The intention of that pilot is for decision-making purposes, gather information to make an informed decision. The second pilot we have is currently in place at Hudson Prairie. We have four classroom teachers, and the intention of this pilot, we've just begun as the school year began, but the intention of this pilot is to inform DPI, so they have data to make informed decisions statewide.
All right. At this time, we're going to share a quick synopsis of some of the major components or comparison points between the two systems. We've gone through an in-depth comparison, and in fact, just at 4 o'clock this evening, we had our educator effectiveness work team working on some of this work to develop a strong understanding of the two systems. strong understanding of the two systems. So I'll talk about the CISA VI system quickly, and then Amanda will talk about the DPI system as she's been so heavily involved as a leader in that system. So first of all, we've already talked about the composition of the pilot, and the most important thing to recognize there, as Amanda said, is the DPI pilot is really structured as a mechanism for us to provide feedback to DPI so they can create a system that works. The system is not as well-developed as our pilot on the CISA VI side, and it's no fault of DPI's. It's a monumental task to try to create this system in the timeframe that they were allowed. The CISA VI system actually has been in development for several years, so they had a bit of a head start. When we talk about standards and indicators, we're talking about those things that we're actually measuring and looking for in the classroom. Both of these systems are based on the same research, as is our current system. It's called the in-task model. It was an extensive research process that looked at effective teaching practices. Although they were broken up differently, categorized differently, it's the same research behind both of them. The CISA VI model is based on the work of Dr. James Strong and Associates. It's broken down into seven standards. Six of those standards are observable, one is student outcome, and then 43 base indicators, and then I note the customization options, which simply means that as a district, we have the ability to add other indicators that link back to those standards, so we can link what we're looking for in the classroom to those things that we value as a district. And then finally, the cost, and we'll talk about the cost, is really an equivalent issue in that the DPI reimburses the district at an $80 per user amount for actual expense, which for the most part covers the majority of the expense with our pilots, so we expect that to continue. I'll have Amanda talk briefly about the DPI model.
So the DPI model is, the scope of that pilot was limited by DPI. We weren't allowed to have our whole school, our whole staff. We have four teachers, myself, fifth grade, we have a second-grade teacher, our media director, who was formerly a third-grade teacher when we went through the initial training of the process, and then our music teacher. So what we tried to do was spread it out, people in different job positions, so we could see what the model would look like for people in different positions. It's based on Charlotte Danielson, a framework that has been around for many, many years. Four domains, we have 22 components, 76 elements, but within each of those elements, there's multiple indicators, which would be similar to the system we have in place now, basic, proficient, advanced, that type of language you'll find in the Danielson model. And again, like Dave said, cost is the $80 per user contribution from DPI.
So when we speak about that cost issue, we were pleased to see the DPI contribution. At one point, we weren't sure how this was all going to play out, and there were some questions, and as DPI moves forward, clarification comes to us, and we will keep you informed as we learn more. Finally, I wanted to share a little bit about teacher leadership. Teacher leadership in the realm of educator effectiveness is essential. Educator effectiveness works based on the contributions of two groups. One would be the principals and associate principals, and other the teachers. And both of these groups are affected significantly by the changes that the educator effectiveness framework brings to their day. There's great benefit and potential benefit with educator effectiveness, but it can't, we cannot realize that benefit without incredible dedication. And the work that we've been doing, I'm very proud of the work of the educator effectiveness work team. We're in our third year of this team, and in working with many other districts across the state, there aren't very many that have had this level of contribution, so our teacher leaders need to be commended for this, it's been fantastic. We've had over 30 teachers. Some of those teachers have left the team and have pursued other leadership opportunities, and we've also expanded the team, though, as we're trying to have a more broad-based representation. So we try to get as many of those individual groups represented on the team. Phase one, starting in 2010-11, was about learning about the educator effectiveness framework and developing a deep understanding of our current system. Last year, we went into phase two, and that's where we went through a process of delineating our values, and that is, what do our teachers value in an evaluation system? What do they want to see? What helps them move forward and improve? And we're in phase three right now, and this was intended to be the year where we're going to compare very significantly the two systems. Based on what we found out as we've learned and progressed, we're not going to be able to run as equal of a comparison as we were hoping, simply because the stage at which the DPI model is, we're much further developed on the CISA VI model. So we are going to proceed with an assumption that there's more to learn, and we need to take some time to learn, but we're going to be pursuing as much information about the CISA VI model as we can, and slightly expanding that model so all of our evaluators get a chance to find out how that system works and understand. We will be coming to you this spring with a recommendation and for you to take action on the implementation of a new educator effectiveness framework for the 2014-15 school year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Lynn?
Mr. President, when will you have more information or more data from the DPI to study that more in-depth, or is that not forthcoming, or kind of where are they at in this process?
That's a great question. Principal Susie Prather and I actually had a conference call last week with DPI, and they've been very, very open to feedback and very willing. Susie has called DPI several times and got information directly from them. So in this conference call, we asked exactly that. When will we know more to make the most reasoned decision? They didn't have a lot of answers for us. They made it clear that the purpose of this pilot was to give them information. One of the questions I did ask was, can this decision be reviewed annually? And the answer is yes, it can. So even if we're in a position where we don't have as much information as we would like, we don't have to lock in long-term to a system that may not be the ideal system. Having said that, I wouldn't recommend changing systems unless there's compelling reasons to do so. Once we engage in this training, it's going to take tremendous resource, but there would be that potential if need be.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Excellent work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving on then to secondary space for learning, a report from, starting with Dan and then Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to kick this thing off and then pass it off to others within the administration. First of all, I'm not sure about my other fellow board members, but I find these work sessions to be very valuable and that it gives us the opportunity with a lot of these meaty topics that we discuss at board meetings to be able to drill down and get more information, have some experts come in and talk to us, and it's really helpful as we try to work through a ever-growing agenda, it seems like, each week. So on November 4th, we had a three-hour work session, and we started by approving the budget and ratifying or certifying the 2013-14 levy, which by the way, went from 2.34% that was approved at the annual meeting to, we reduced it down to 1.65% over the previous year. And to get there, we had adjustments in the state aid, we got some additional funding at the state level, and some adjustments were made within the district in order to get to that level. So on that point, I want to thank the administration, my fellow colleagues on the board, as we, I feel we helped push that levy further down, passing some savings on to our taxpayers. Beyond that, we had a discussion about the UU property. We had some experts on the sanitary and water service, I believe the company was Bowdine, that came in, and they had done some soil analysis studies and found that the soil is conducive for an onsite septic system with sufficient capacity for proposed school facility up to 2,775 students and staff. They also studied the property for an onsite well-water system and found that it would be possible to harvest sufficient water supply on the site to adequately serve that number, that size school and number of students and staff. So that was a positive development. We also had a brief discussion about where we're at with the sewer line connection with the city, and there is a legal feasibility study done that was promising, and now I think more work has to be done in terms of looking at the technical feasibility for doing that, as well as the capacity that the city has. So that's another piece to this puzzle. And then another component of the report that evening was, we heard from Hoffman Company on our three secondary space options, and they took a look at each one of those options that include a three-year, 10-12 high school with the current high school converted to a grade eight-nine school, and current middle school converted to a 6-7 school. Another option is to construct a grade 10-12 high school, but the existing middle school and high school would become 6-9 schools. The third option then is to construct a grade 6-9 middle school, and then the current high school would become a 10-12 grade facility, and the current middle school would become a 6-9 grade facility. Hoffman presented the board with proposed floor plans for each of these options so that we could get a better sense of how the current and planned curriculum would fit into each of the different facility options. Each of the different options offers some benefits, as well as challenges at this board, as well as the community, we'll need to consider and decide upon in the days ahead. Also, Hoffman presented some cost estimates for each one of those options along with the remodeling expenses, so I know a number of my fellow board members were there. Did I cover the high points before I turn it over to administration?
Sounds like you did a good job, Dan.
Thank you.
Mary?
So Dan did cover many of the high points, and we felt that it was important in conversation with board members to have more information presented here so grad students could have more access to the information that was shared from Bowdoin and from Hoffman during the evening. So Tracy Havishalene is here to talk about, to review the Hoffman information. Tim Erickson, financial services director, will provide a little bit more information about the Bowdoin report and talk about the cost, the conceptual cost estimates that were provided in the evening. So we're going to start with Tim, I believe. Yes, Tim?
Okay. As Dan mentioned, the, on the work session, the board did hear a report by Bowdoin Engineering. Bowdoin Engineering is one of relatively few engineering firms in the state that specialize in large septic system design, and their conclusions were that a large septic system could be supported on the UU property for up to 2,500 students. They've also went through and had a lot of discussion with the DNR. This is not a final approval by the DNR, but it is, their comments are very positive. They've spent quite a bit of time talking with the DNR about the design of this particular system, and the DNR's been very favorable at this point. And it's a little bit different than the, if we look at the previous study that had been done. Bowdoin uses a different method to calculate their water usage, and so it roughly, it almost cuts that water usage by about in half, which allows them to look at a larger septic system, larger septic system design rather than a wastewater treatment plant. And then as far as the water capacity for well system, it was, the preliminary findings are that there would be enough water capacity there, you know, looking at the history of surrounding wells to support a larger school. So in looking at the septic system cost, we're looking at a range from about $1,009,000 to 1.2 million. And again, that's dependent on whether, on the low end, if the system, if the basic system is able to reduce nitrates, et cetera, down to DNR requirements, it would be closer to that $1,009,000 number. If the systems require, if some enhancements to the system are required to get to those regulatory numbers, then it would be about $1,002,000. And the estimated well system cost is from $228,000 to $331,000. And again, differences in flow and whether we're able to provide pressure to things like sprinkler systems, that type of thing. So, any questions?
Questions? Okay.
I'm going to walk through the options as presented by Hoffman, and those included their observations as they went through each of those options. They had already met with both the high school and middle school staff to talk about programming and to look at how programming fits into those options, and giving us some preliminary estimated costs. And I will reiterate, or say first, and Tim will reiterate, that those costs are construction costs and just very preliminary for us. I'm not, I'll walk through each option quickly. So option one includes the construction of a three-year high school, grades 10-12. This would be a new structure. It would provide the high school with a flexible 21st century learning space for 1650 as far as a student count. What that means is, what is flexible 21st century learning space? That's adequate space for STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math courses, science labs, project-based learning, collaboration space that allows for crossing and connecting subject, subject matter, space that supports interactive and participatory learning. So it's a very flexible design that we would be looking for to support what the board has already established for our strategic vision, HSD 2025, and high school learning for the future. And what you have at the bottom there is the conceptual cost, again, the preliminary number at 61 million. Additionally to this option, converting the current high school to grades eight-nine, the observations listed here, the, both grades eight and nine have a similar programmatic requirement as far as coursework and whatnot, so it would easily fit into that space, really looking at arranging that building, potentially having eighth grade on one side, ninth grade on the other, and being able to come together and sharing science lab space so that remodeling would be minimal. This option would allow for the administrative offices to move back to that site and then ultimately sell the current administrative office buildings, and the conceptual cost here is one and a half million. The final part of this option is converting the middle school to grade 6-7. There really isn't much in the way of modifications to this particular part of the option. It requires some changes, but the middle school was designed for this grade level, so if you move the student capacity back to where the building was designed, it works quite well. And so that's why there's no cost associated with this part of the option. Option two, construct a three-year high school, again, grades 10 through 12. There's really not much to add. This is just a replication of the first part of option one. This is where it changes, so convert the high school to grade 6-9, and then the middle school would be, the current middle school would be converted to a 6-9. So essentially what you're doing is creating two middle schools in the district. This, the setup, six and seven would be paired, again, at probably one side of the building, eight-nine at another side because of their programmatic requirements are similar. There's not much difference to add to this. Questions did come up as far as equity or providing the same kind of program at both sites. Obviously, we have a pool at one site, we don't have a pool at the other site, so that would be something that the board would have to consider in moving forward. So that would be something that the board would have to consider in moving forward. And this option also does not allow for the space to move the administrative offices. So the estimated cost on this for updates and remodeling would be 1.5 million. And then, the third part of this is converting the middle school to six, nine. The biggest change here would be needing to update the ninth grade program requirements at the middle school. The middle school was not designed for ninth grade, so there's some tech ed, family and consumer ed, changes that would need to take place, some science lab changes that would need to take place as well. And also, just to meet the requirements, our estimated student enrollment, you'll see on this map where there's that pink area, or orange area, where we would need to do some add-ons to that building. So those are extensions, it's not a second floor or anything, those are extending classroom space, so that we could provide the program that we would be providing at the other site. Option three is to construct a new grade six, nine school. Advantages or observations? You can design the school to meet your needs. It does split your freshman academy between two buildings. Again, the issue of a pool, if you're going to require the same kind of educational experience at both sites. And then, the estimated cost of a new six, nine at the 38 million here. This option keeps the high school as a high school for grades 10 through 12. There would be, in order to meet what the board has established for our strategic vision and high school learning for the future, there would be some significant remodeling to upgrade and enlarge some of the existing spaces, and to provide the science labs and all of those things that we've, the board has been talking about. And this would, I'm just going to go ahead, so you can kind of see the map. This is a current high school. The red and green areas show remodeling and additions. And what this does is bump out the front of the building. This would be, and then on the right side, or the east side of the building, there's also a bump out for classrooms. The front would be a two-story with classrooms on the top. This does take up some of your parking, so you see in the bottom left-hand corner, additional parking added to the space. And this is basically a programmatic layout of the high school. It's just a concept of what the high school would need to have in it to accommodate what we have set as a district for high school learning for the future. And I'll go back quick, because the cost of remodeling and upgrading, that would be the 24 million. And then, converting the middle school to a grade six, nine, and that's similar to what I said earlier, about what would need to happen at that location. And I'll turn it back to Tim, so you can talk about some of the other ATS and R, and what they've been doing, and how that fits in.
So previously, the board heard a report from ATS and R architects on the high school facility assessment, and the current, currently where they thought recommended improvements, repairs, et cetera, to the facilities would be needed. And Hoffman did review those recommendations, and we discussed, and the focus was placed on the priority one and two items. And those items are listed below. Mechanical really being the largest item of the total. But mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and then the building structure and grounds were the largest areas. And the estimated total cost to those upgrades and improvements is 26,907. So if you take, again, the numbers that Tracy has run through, and she's right, I'm going to emphasize, those are conceptual costs. So they can vary up to 10 to 15 percent. There's a lot more refinement that's going to be done in this whole process, as we go through refinement and programmatic planning, and then as we go forward in the footprint, et cetera. So, again, for conceptual costs, we can guarantee one thing, the numbers are going to change as we go, and as it gets refined, and as the scope gets finalized. So, just keeping that in mind. There are some costs that are not included, and those include off-site improvements, such as improvements to roadway that would be required by the surrounding jurisdictions. As Tracy talked about, auditorium and swimming pool are not included in some of those options. And then, furniture, fixture, and equipment for tech ed and science labs would also be an additional cost. But if you look at those previous numbers, and then add in the 26,907, option one is 89,542,000, option two is 92,523,000, and option three is 92,327,000. And again, those are all conceptual numbers and their estimates. The costs do include, if we're looking at the UU site, in the range of square footage, square footage runs from about $165,000 to $225,000, or $225 dollars per square foot for the three-year high school. And really, again, as we work through this, choosing that mid-range of $195 dollars per square foot used for the calculation to get to the total number, does include the, some of the characteristics of the UU site, so some additional grading and filling that would have to be done out there, as well as the septic considerations that we talked about earlier. So that, that's the summary on the costs. Any questions there?
Before we get to questions, do you want to talk a little bit about what the next steps are in this process?
And I will summarize those, certainly any board member can add in as well. This is based on the board's direction and conversation at the work session, and then expanded at facilities and grounds, that committee meeting. So we're really preparing for the next work session on November 25th. That will be from 6:00 in the evening to 9:00 o'clock at the Administrative Service Center. And we'll have representatives from Hoffman, again, providing information to the board, the things that they've asked for. One of the conversations that occurred at the work session was about the town of Hudson, and their support of various things on the site. So we've asked Hoffman to come back to that work session with two concept plans, site concept plans. One for the six, nine, that is in one of the options, and the other for the three-year high school. So they're starting to work on that. The board was also interested in seeing a timeline to the referendum. We've talked about a potential referendum in August of 2014, or potentially in November of 2014. So they will be, we will be sharing information about that timeline updated. We have one that has been in place, a draft, a working draft, but it's been updated as we move forward. Then, the board asked for various cost estimates to be added or considered. I'm not sure we'll add them, that's up to the board. But when we look at particularly that option three, which is using the current high school and converting it to a three-year high school, and comparing it to the other options of building a new three-year high school, one of the things that wasn't included in the cost estimates was bringing it up to date with the program requirements, things like fixtures, furniture, and equipment for a 21st century learning environment. So that cost estimate will be provided by Hoffman as well. Tim talked about the swimming pool, and so did Tracy about the equity, so that could be considered, and so they're coming back with a cost of that. And then, an auditorium, again, another thing for us to consider as we move forward. And it was decided to look at an auditorium for 900 students, to consider that. So, the board also asked for the administration to give feedback on each of the options in relationship to HSD 2025, our strategic vision, the middle school philosophy, and high school learning for the future. And then, the additional transition that we have in option one, moving an additional transition from the six, seven to the eight, nine. We'll also be providing information on community feedback, and the process that, potential process that could be used, what topics could be considered to get feedback, and a timeline for doing that for the board's discussion. And then, the committee also requested that we have a conversation about exploring other properties as a backup to County UU, if that's not finally decided as the site for the new school. And if there's any other additional steps and information that you'd like for the November 25th work session, we'd like to know that, so that we can provide that to the board to help their work.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board regarding this report? Since everybody's at the work session, I guess.
Just one comment, Mr. President? Yeah, the other comment, I think, that was, you know, just discussed among the group, was the fact that, you know, the need to expedite the process as much as we can. You know, I think that that was prevalent amongst all of us, and just understanding things that we could do to shorten the process, or find areas to speed it up, if you will. So I think that that was pretty common in our discussion, and I thought it was a great work session, I thought we had a lot of good collaboration as a board. Thanks.
Thanks, Bruce, that's a good reminder. Anybody else?
As we were given, as you were given the report, one of the other things that I noticed is, as far as the administrative offices, I think in option one, if we'd move them back to what would become an eight, nine building, that would be, represent some savings to the district, I'd like to know how much we would recoup by selling the ASC building. And I had another thought, but I guess I'll think of it, and then email everyone.
We'll let Lynn talk while you think.
All right, sounds good.
I just want to make a comment on what Jamie said, and that's, I don't know that they can predict what the value of that building will be casting forward. You know, you could have somebody give you a market opinion of what it would bring now, but, you know, a year or so from now, just for a point of reference.
Oh, Mr. President, I just realized what I forgot. We have a pre-referendum timeline that we're going to be filling in, and talking about the next work session. I think I would also like to hear from Hoffman as to a post-referendum timeline, as to the difference it would make having the referendum in August versus November, as far as when we could open a school.
Good, good thought. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Dan?
Couple of questions. One is, I know I had mentioned in my comments about the discussion we had, about the sewer line connection from the city. Do we have a timeline on when that's going to be?
I think we're going to get that report later on, aren't we?
That's coming later?
Coming later, under Topics for Action.
Okay, and my other question, maybe for Tracy, is all of this information on the website, so if somebody, you know, from the public wants to...
We'll have it posted, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good comments. Okay, I think we're finished with that report. Thank you very much. We have two citizens request to speak, so I'd like to invite Mr. Roger Lalaberty to the microphone, welcome you to the microphone. If you would, sir, just please give your name and address, and then please feel free to make comment on anything that's not on the agenda, so thank you.
Very good. I'm called Roger Dale Lalaberty. I live at 588 Tower Road in Hudson. And can I ask a question before I proceed?
Sure.
Who is responsible for the curriculum that is presented in our schools and that? Is it the state, or does federal dictate to you people?
Okay, what I'm going to, I'm going to suggest is that we'll answer that question, but go ahead and just complete your comments and thoughts.
Sure. First thing I want to bring up is linguistics. Correct sentence structure, correct parse syntax grammar. Nobody in here knows how to read and write, and I don't mean to be confrontational, as you said, sometimes it's hard to change behavior. But how do I want to present that? I'm not a religious person, but in the Bible, and I'm referencing King James Version, it's in the Hebrew Bible, it's in the Islamic Bible, the Quran, so it's documented that the lords came down, confused our language, and scattered us all over. Can anybody tell me how the lords did that?
Proceed, I will.
Okay, there is now information that not only correct sentence structure and correct parse syntax grammar, but in quantum, i.e. divine math. So there will be no more babble, there will be no more arguments amongst the people. I bring this to the community, so we can learn together. So do not think I'm being confrontational, and it's everybody, okay? At all levels. So I will move on from that. What I'd like to see there is our English teachers be allowed to emphasize, and maybe even have a special curriculum, so that we understand writing. Writing is symbols, just like the Egyptian symbols, the Sumerians, they all have symbols. So I'm going to move on from that, so I wish you'd take that under advisement, and look into this a little further. The next one is fluoride in the water. And I see we have our police officer here, and I think he would agree, drugs are the worst thing, probably, in our community, or one of the worst. Why do we put sodium fluoride in the water and give it to our children at school? You have all been misled on that. This started with the Russians, they gave it to the Germans. The Germans gave it to the Jewish people in concentration camps to make them more docile, okay? And if it's not good for the Jewish people, or rats, it's the main ingredient in rat poison. If you look at toothpaste, it says if you swallow it, you're supposed to call the poison center. Yet about a 12-ounce glass of water is the equivalent to that little dab of toothpaste. So I would like to see that removed, if we could. That's really bad stuff when you investigate it. And again, you got to go back to the Russians, Russians gave it to the Germans, and then all of a sudden, corporations here thought it'd be a good idea to give it to all our children and the people. I notice you drink bottled water, it's in that, too. The second thing is, why don't we teach sacred geometry to our children? How are they ever going to learn the sounds of God if we don't teach them how creation, the sounds, work? This is, might be a little, and I can elaborate, I don't want to take a lot of your time, and I'm not a good speaker, but that is very important, very, very, very important. And the last one is banking, and I see we're talking about money here, so this is kind of relevant. Has anybody ever heard of modern money mechanics, or two faces of debt? Documents put out by the Federal Reserve Bank? By the way, it's not federal, they have no reserves, and they're not a bank. But basically, if you read Modern Money Mechanics, what you're teaching in school is not how the banking system works. If you read that document, it's basically how to run a Ponzi scheme, okay? And so I would like the real banking system to be explained in school. And again, I don't want to take a lot of time, I see you've got a lot on the agenda, but I wish you would address this. I have much, much knowledge, and this, all this that I bring up, all I have to do is ask. I can just ask, and there's a knowing, or I get directed to the information I need, okay? okay? And I'm not claiming anything at this point, but I hope we can resolve this and start the dialogue is my only thing here. We do not want to have to involve the legal system, the judiciary courts of the state of Wisconsin Incorporated, doing business as St. Croix County Circuit Court. Let's leave them out of it. Let's show them we are knowledgeable men with balance, and women, pardon me, with balance, and we can start open dialogue on some of these untouchable subjects. And some people in here know what I'm talking about, and I hope they come forward. And if not, I'll be back. And again, it's only for dialogue, and I understand what I've, my claim that I've made, but please, look at your language, go and study correct sentence structure, correct parse syntax grammar, and we'll all learn to talk and get along. Wouldn't that be great? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lalaberty. Thank you very much. We will, there's a lot there that you...
I understand, and it's not all, but these are subjects, the fluoride thing is almost non-negotiable. I'm not making a demand here of anything, but the fluoride thing is terrible.
Thank you, Mr. Lalaberty.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. As I said, there's a lot there that you've given us to think about. It might be best if we have a conversation with you, kind of individually, rather than trying to cover all of that, all of those things. So unless anybody else wants to respond, thank you, Mr. Lalaberty. We've gotten your point. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nice evening.
Okay. All right, so I don't know if there's any response somewhat to that. Yeah, okay, we'll move on to the next one and then go back. Next to speak, Pat Saban. Pat, welcome to the microphone, and again, if you would just give your name and address and the non-topic action that, agenda that you'd like to talk about.
My name is Pat Saban, 773 Garrity Lane, Hudson, Wisconsin, and I'm here to talk about the I Pledge video. I realize this is kind of old news, but I'm not going to be talking about anything that was discussed at the last meeting. And I've also, I've got this all written down, I'm not the best speaker up here, so bear with me. And I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As I said, I'm here to talk about the I Pledge video. To start with, I believe that six months is an inordinate amount of time for this study to be done. Also, considering the nationwide notoriety of the video, would it not have been wise to have some parental involvement in this study? This video consists of more than just a political slant. To have us believe this was an innocent mistake is insulting. If those who saw the video prior to showing it, and truthfully did not see the problem, this fact alone would be quite alarming in and of itself. The Bible tells us that each tree is known by its own fruit. The main trees in the I Pledge video are Oprah Winfrey and Barack Obama. The fruit, of course, is the video. It was shown in recognition of peace one day, and who would argue against peace? Produced by filmmaker Jeremy Gilly, his emphasis is on global unity, intercultural cooperation, and becoming active global citizens. This view is the same as the United Nations' agenda of a one-world government. Even the peace one day logo is similar to that of the UN. We know the President is big on organizing and volunteerism. Early in his career, he made an unsuccessful attempt to make volunteerism mandatory. We have been brainwashed to believe that if the cause appears innocent enough, like plant a tree, what's the problem? The problem isn't the service project itself, the problem is the goal and worldview behind the project. Do you know that the President has transformed September 11th and Dr. Martin Luther King Day into Days of Service? This will, over time, turn the emphasis away from what actually occurred. Why would President Obama lessen the impact and true meaning of those two days? Perhaps it has something to do with the tremendous influence of communists, Marxists, Muslims, and socialists that were a part of his life from the day he was born and continue to this day. Except to this list, we can now add the Muslim Brotherhood. What is important to the President may not be important to most citizens, or what is good for the United States of America. On one of his many service websites, you will find his priorities. Climate change, another name for global whatever, comprehensive immigration reform, another name for amnesty, secure inequality for GLBT, which usually means taking rights away from those who are not GLBT, violence prevention, another name for gun control, standing with Obamacare, I won't go there, and last but not least, standing with women, which is another name for the right to kill unborn and sometimes recently born children. The I Pledge video itself encourages things important to President Obama, such as working with UNICEF, which is an organization of the United Nations, being the voice for those who have no voice, this does not include unborn babies, recycle, plant trees, buy high bred cars, another name for radical environmentalism in Agenda 21. Being the change, the problem is the change this President hopes to achieve is to transform America away from its roots, away from the Constitution, and away from liberty. The video encourages the viewer to go to USAService.org to find a project. After putting that address into a search engine, it brings up other Barack and Michelle Obama service organizations. You start searching these, and it brings up more and different ones. Why so many? One can only imagine. They are directed at our youth and young adults. You can be assured without a doubt, the Obama fruit is free and plentiful in all of these service organizations. Just as in the video, the indoctrination will not always be obvious, but it will be there. In many instances, it is what you don't find that will help you connect the dots. In conclusion, to brush this video off as a mere political slant is a gross understatement. This video is one of ideas, of worldviews, of a new world order. Seeds are planted. Indoctrination can begin as innocently as being involved in a worthwhile service project. We have come to a very sad time in America's history, when it has become mandatory, as parents, that we must find out everything our children are learning in school, because education is no longer about education. It is about agendas of those in authority and influence. It is about taking our children away from their families, churches, traditions, values, and morals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Pat. Now we'll, thank you. Now we'll have any responses or comments to both or either of those comments.
I can respond as far as our committee. As you know, we are, we do have plans to put together a committee, Internet Resources and Electronic Media. To pre the start of the committee, each of our principals did meet with their staff and review our expectations regarding video usage, and collected some information from the staff on what they'd like to see. And then we also posted on our website an opportunity for parents to be part of that committee, allowed a two-week application process. On Monday, we actually had to randomly draw names, because we did have so many applicants, and I made calls today. So I now have a elementary, a middle school, and a high school parent that will be serving on the committee, and then am going to continue tomorrow with identifying our teacher reps, and then we have set our first meeting for November 21st. So things are in, are moving forward.
Okay. I think there was a comment about taking six months. I think we'd like to move that along as quickly as possible, and under that six-month period if we can.
Correct.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sandy, I think it would be worthwhile to just talk about the first gentleman's question about who's responsible for the curriculum. Certainly, the district is responsible and determines the curriculum with board support, so why don't you talk a little bit about our process of doing that?
Thank you. Our process does include looking at both Wisconsin State standards. As a starting point, obviously, there are, Wisconsin does have expectations of what is taught in our classrooms in each of the subject areas. We also review national standards in many of our subjects, look at best practice, research-based trends in both instruction and in those subject areas as well. And then we have committees of teachers that come together and review all those materials. We set learning targets, expectations, write assessments, look for resources, and then implement over the course of usually five to six years, and then we go through the process again. Teachers are meeting almost daily, as far as looking, you know, with our collaboration time, looking at what we're teaching and what needs to be modified, some things that we need to bring in that perhaps need improvement as well. It's a kind of a ongoing process over time, consistently over time, but approximately once every six years, there's a major curriculum improvement process that we go through with each curricular area.
Any other responses or comments to the, to the two citizens that have spoken tonight? I'll just encourage, both citizens are either want to contact the administration for further discussion, or you'd like to talk more about that, we can do that, but we won't do that tonight any longer. So thank you very much for your comments, and you have the option, again, to speak further with administration about this, okay? Moving on then, we'll move on to topics for action. The first action item we have is partnership with Hudson Police Department Satellite Police Office at Hudson Middle School, Hudson Prairie Elementary, starting with Jamie and then Mary.
All right. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like Chief Jensen to come to the front and help us discuss this one, because we're going to be talking about, if you've read the paper, then you know that the city has taken action on this item, and we're asking the full board to address this after it's been addressed at the committee level. But that's a partnership with Hudson Police Department in establishing a satellite office at the middle school. And part of that plan is to increase law enforcement presence and visibility, and I understand that it was Chief Jensen who actually came up with the idea, at least I'll credit to you, as a possible way to, you know, keep that partnership going. We already have a school liaison officer, but this is separate and apart from that. It's establishing increased visibility of law enforcement at the middle school, and assigning an officer there 24/7 to use the site for office workspace. The district would be providing at the middle school office electricity, telephone line, internet access, parking space, and this cost, I understand, is minimal, if not hard to determine, but it would be minimal. This could be in place as early as December or late January if the full board approves this. And the officers would be carrying out regular police duties, but they would not be questioning suspects there unless they were middle school students, I guess. This is different from the pool school liaison officer that I explained, John Grass serves in that capacity. But anyway, we are looking forward to this partnership, and Chief Jensen, I guess, the final thing to add is, before we have any kind of motion, is that the full cost of the officers assigned to the satellite will be borne by the city, as I understand it, so...
That's correct.
What do you have to add?
I'd love to be able to take full credit for this, but obviously, the Mary and her staff had approached me about how we could increase police presence at the other schools besides the high school. Excuse me, I've got something in my throat. And we talked about the model in Jordan, Minnesota, where they have substations at all the different schools there. Obviously, that's something that's impractical for obviously many reasons, but we looked at possibly putting a satellite office at one of the schools that will give my officers an opportunity to stop in there during the day, take calls for service from on the phones, write reports, and be visible at the school while still being up on the Hill area. Obviously, with our police department being downtown, it's harder for our officers to always have to come down and type up their reports and then have to leave to go on a call. Obviously, with the satellite office being up on the Hill, that will increase our response times, especially up on the interstate area in the Hill. We sat down with Mary and Tim, and we talked about it. It's very minimal. I'm going to present, pre-providing a computer, we'll have a desk that'll be there, phone, internet. I'm going to be assigning at least four officers for right now that'll be assigned to that building, that will be their substation. They will be there. Mary's going to give us a parking stall there so we can park our squad cars. I can't see any down, excuse me again, any downside to this at all. I think it's a win-win for both the school district and the police department.
Thank you, Chief Jensen. Mary, did you have any other comments that you wanted to make?
Well, I think both Jamie and Chief Jensen covered that. It's certainly a way for us to serve the needs of the city, and also serve the needs of the school district for that visibility and presence of law enforcement by our schools. And in this site, the advantage of the middle school Hudson Prairie site is it has the largest population in one site in our school district of both students and staff. So it serves essentially two schools with one satellite office. So very positive partnership to recommend to you.
And just to reiterate, in the, in the document that was presented, just to be clear, this is different from the police liaison officer from the, from the Hudson Police Department that is primarily dedicated to the Hudson High School.
Correct.
So we shouldn't have the expectation that you're going to be there all the time.
Yeah, John's job will basically be the same. He'll respond to calls for service, especially at the middle school. If something should happen while my officers are at the middle school, an emergency or something, obviously, they're going to respond anyway. But normal routine, calls for service at the middle school will be handled by John as well. Basically, like I said, it's a substation for our guys to use for writing reports, and then obviously, it's being visible at the school, should something happen there as well.
All right, okay. Mary?
I just want to add a thank you to Chief Jensen for his collaboration with us. It's been outstanding, looking at ways to help our schools be more safe and secure. So really appreciate this. This is one of the components of our improvement plan that we will be implementing over a three-year period, but he's been a great partner for us to think through those components and how we can increase safety and security in and around our schools.
Seems like an effective and efficient way to deal with two issues that resolve somewhat both, so...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I guess I have a question. I'm not sure if Mary or answer, or Chief Jensen, what, assuming that we would approve this, what would be the main factor in when you start being able to have an officer there?
As soon as I can get a computer and get it set up and get in that space, we'll get it started right away.
All right.
It's already been approved by the Hudson City Council, so it's, we're just waiting on your determination.
Okay. And so are there any delays that we would have, Mary, for space at this point in time?
We're looking at having the space available at the beginning of December, and then it's just a matter of getting everything in place so that the officers can be fully functioning in that place.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President, just a quick comment, and I just want to thank the chief as well. I, you know, in this day and age of what we're having to live with, and all the unfortunate incidents across the country involving unfortunately our schools, anything that we can do along these lines, I think is just, you know, a great thing. And I, me, as a parent of, you know, a middle schooler, and I know there's countless other parents out there as well as, you know, staff and everyone else involved, I know they'll see this as a real positive move, so I want to thank all those involved with getting this proposal for us.
Thanks, Dan. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to regarding this partnership with the police department, the Satellite Police Office at Hudson Middle School and Hudson Prairie Elementary. Lynn?
I move to approve the partnership with Hudson Police Department with the Satellite Police Office at the middle school in Hudson Prairie.
Motion by Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again, and thank you, Chief Jensen, again, for your time and, and coming tonight and helping us understand this better, so... Okay, we're moving on then to secondary space for learning County UU property, city feasibility study for extending utilities. I think there was some discussion regarding this at the last board work session, and the city has done some, some work already in the legal aspect of the feasibility of putting utilities out to the UU site. The technical steps would be the next step that... The technical steps would be the next step that we're considering as a board, and I believe that, I wasn't present at the last board work session unfortunately, but understood that there were some questions or some requests to get information, further information about this that Tim, I think, asked for us tonight.
So, yeah, as you, kind of the recap of the first part of the request to the city was to, the board directed us to go back and ask the city if they were able to legally extend utilities out to the UU site. So, that question was answered by a review of the city attorney, and that was a yes. So, as Tom indicated at the last board work session, discussion around the next step, if any, in that process. And so, the next step was to look at the technical feasibility. So, could it be done? And more along the lines of information on what would be provided if the city went forward with the next part of that study. So, for the next part of the study, the fee is about $12,000. And so, what would be determined in that study to extend water and sewer out is the city's going to review their existing and proposed capacity of the sewer lift station on Vine Street and the sanitary sewer force main. They'll also verify capacity of their wastewater treatment plant. They'll review the capacity of water service to the site, and they'll also verify through existing water modeling. So, again, I'll get into the conclusion on the technical end of whether they can extend that. They'll also review the requirements for extending sanitary sewer and water mains to related equipment outside the city. Also will include preliminary drawings for the potential alignments for the water main and the related, and the looping, if any, and the alignments for the sanitary sewer mains. They'll also contract, contact private utility companies to verify any conflicts with potential alignments of the existing utilities in the county UU right-of-way, prepare an opinion of probable project costs, and then determine the required permits that the district would have to acquire. And then they also will review those findings with city staff, so Water Department, the Utility Department, Public Works, et cetera. And then prepare a report and concept drawings. And so, they'll be working with their consulting engineers if the board decides to move forward with this second step tonight. So, any questions?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Lynn?
Did you mention the timeline, Tim, on what that would take?
Yeah, the timeline that was provided was about 60 days.
Tim, I have a question regarding the cost versus the potential benefit. You know, we're looking at, you know, a septic option. If utilities at UU couldn't be extended from the city, we know we're going to spend $12,000 here if we move forward with this next study, if the board decides to do that. Do you have any sense as to the advantage of, in a cost, to having city utilities out there versus having a septic system?
Well, there's, you know, there's a, until we can get that report back from the city, it's going to be a little hard to tell, but certainly there are advantages of having city utility versus your own, like we talked about with the septic system. There, you know, but again, it kind of depends, like you're saying, on that cost of what, what is the, what's the cost of the project? How much future operating costs are, if there's any, again, cost sharing and infrastructure improvements in the future or anything like that. So, once we get that information, we can, we can kind of set those down side by side. Because there are operating costs with the septic system as well. I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood of $37,000 a year to operate that large septic system. So, there are, you know, some advantages and some drawbacks to each one, and we'll be able to set those down side by side once we get the report back.
Okay. Sandy?
Mr. President? I have, I have some reluctance to do this since we know we can have a septic and well out there now, which we didn't know before, but we can now. And I have not, I've been at a number of the city meetings, and I have never gotten the feeling that the city is ready to just jump up and down for joy because of what we're asking. I'm beginning to feel from their reaction to things that they may not approve this, no matter what. So, I would think that we might be wiser to just forget that and go ahead with a well and septic. We know we can have one. We know what the cost is approximately going to be. We know what the operating cost is going to be, and I think that we could cut some time off of the schedule by eliminating that, the city water and sewer as a potential option. Just my thought.
Others?
Mr. President, question regarding the water, city water. Does that necessarily have to go with the sewer access?
I don't believe it would have to, no.
So, that could be an independent, I mean, so.
If you wanted to have, connect a sewer but not water, is that what you're asking, Dan?
Yeah, I guess, are we requesting both?
We're, right now, we're requesting both, yes.
Okay, but the water is not necessarily something that would have to come with it. I'm just curious, because it sounds like that's something we could get onsite versus.
Yeah, it's not mandatory, but it's not a package deal, but we're having them look at both.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Jamie?
In reviewing the materials at the last work session, and we had the three-year-old SEH report, which I know was prepared, and it has its issues because they didn't do borings with their estimates and so forth, when they said they didn't think it was feasible, and now Bowdoin is saying that it is feasible. But based on SEH's numbers, it looked like installation of city sewer and water would be roughly half of what it would be to have septic and well. And then, what I don't have a good feeling for is what it would cost, ongoing cost. Obviously, we're paying, as I reviewed our disbursements, we pay the city lots of money every month for city utilities. So, I'd like to know.
So, installation would be half, but operations is another question?
Right, and I also saw in the SEH report where, in answer to Dan's question about, do we have to do one, you know, do we have to do both? Can we do one or the other? I think, yes, we could do one or the other, but as in the SEH report, they show that there's about a 35% to 40% savings on each if you do them together. And so, as opposed to doing them separate. I would like to see us, you know, move forward with this. I recognize that it is an expenditure that we may not need, but I think to make a really good decision about this property and the school that we're going to put out there, to go to the voters and say that we just went ahead with city septic because Bowdoin said it was all right, without finding, I'm sorry, I said city septic, onsite septic, you know, without finding out what it would cost to run city sewer and water out there. And I agree with Sandy to the extent that, you know, we're not real certain about whether this will get approved. There was no guarantee, just because it's legally feasible that it will get done. But I think that we're at least given an opportunity to be reviewed and compared side by side in what are the advantages and disadvantages of each.
Thanks, Jamie. Just, I'd like to go back to something that Sandy had brought up, and that was regarding the time, you know, the delay, the potential delay doing this might create. I mean, is that viable, I mean, is that potentially viable? Are we still looking at a delay with a septic that would match potentially a delay with the city? Or could the cities, the city option be a further delay, do you think? Do you have an opinion about that?
Well, the, you know, if you look at the, at the process, so we're talking 60 days to get the report back, and then the board would review and consider that. And then if it was in the affirmative that yes, city utilities was the way to go, then there is, you know, there'd be another process. I can't really speak to the exact timeline on that city process, but they'll have, they'll have, hopefully have a good indication of whether they can do it. But it would just be, again, as the city attorney mentioned, they would have some possible ordinance changes. They'll have to go through the county for the sewer plan, and the county has the authority over the sewer plan. So, there are some additional hoops. I think, and I just was going to comment also, I think the SEH report had an estimate of about $885, so let's say $900,000 to extend that water and sewer out. And you're correct, Jamie, if you do both, there was some, there was some cost savings there. But again, you know, it probably makes some sense to have both reports. There are, you know, there are drawbacks to each and advantages to each one, so.
Bruce?
Thank you. Just curious, 60 to 90 days was the timeframe to get word back from the city?
60 days, yeah.
60 days. Do we know, is that all? I mean, is there going to be further investigation that needs to take place from there? I'm just curious.
You know, I, it includes the things that I listed. If there's something else that they think of that they need to address, they'll, they'll let us know and they'll have to address it, I'm sure. You know, it's not, I would say it's, it's something that they haven't done since whenever the Village of North Hudson was put on the sewer plan. So, it's not something they do all the time. And my guess is, you know, some other things may come to light as part of the process. That's probably the best answer I could, I could give you at this point.
Mr. President?
Lynn?
Bruce, is what you're asking, if there's another approval process that council has to do beyond this feasibility study?
Exactly. I mean, we're already looking at another 60 days, and then, you know, from there, who knows, right? And if we're going to be spending $12,000 right now to then maybe learn that there's an additional timeframe or additional information that needs to be explored, to me, it would seem like we should be able to have everything on the table right now as to what needs to be done to make the final decision for us to move forward with this, considering we have an option on the table that's feasible today for us to move forward with. And again, I know I said this at our work session, but I feel like there's opportunities for us to do things congruently as we're moving forward, making a decision. And I would just challenge us as a board to continue to look for different ways to advance our discussions and bring a solution to the capacity issue we have within our community.
Sandy?
I believe that Bowdoin said that they could, we could be permitted and ready to dig in six months. Is that, do you remember them saying that?
Uh, yeah, I was, I'm thinking that's, that's more correct, Sandy.
Six months, so if you say today that we're going to build on that property instead of waiting for the city to decide what they're going to do, we could be permitted, DNR permits, all permits, and ready to dig dirt in six months. That isn't going to happen with the city coming out here with water and sewer. I'm just pointing out that six-month period of time is what we would have.
I appreciate that, I think that's helpful. I, but I, but I question, would we do that? Would we, would we, would we begin to spend the money to put a septic system into a piece of property that we haven't had a past referendum on yet?
No, that's not what I'm intending to say.
I'm not saying that, so you said, I'm just asking the question, so.
That, that wouldn't be what we would do. What we would do is make the decision now that that's what we're going to do, and we'd start our plan and get going and do it. Start our plan for the building and get going and do it. Knowing we can, it would only take six months from the time we give Bowdoin the yes to dig dirt on the septic system.
Thanks for the clarification. I, I think it's the, it's the, it's the delay of the planning of it that is, then becomes the question, so, okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Jamie?
Could we, to that laundry list of things you listed, Tim, could we include, you know, some type of timeline in there also for, you know, approval? Because I think, and maybe I'm speaking out term, because we have a work session on this, but I would think we would want some clarity with a price tag on any referendum we have. And if bringing city sewer and water could save our taxpayers almost a million dollars, I think that they have a right to know that when they're voting. And so, that's one thing. And secondly, to do the septic, just to get the permit, to know that we can, I think to move forward without a permit would not be a good thing. But just to get the permit, you heard Bowdoin said, they need 10% upfront. That's $123,000. Are we willing to say, we'll wait and spend that after the referendum passes, and then we'll find out whether we get a permit or not? I think that we should have this ability to compare whether we're going forward with city sewer and water or the septic, as opposed to, we might be able to do one, but we know we can do the one, let's just wait and ride it out. I, I think that we should go ahead and spend the money to have the city pursue this, but hold them to their timeline that they promised, and get a timeline for being able to go forward with it after that.
Mary?
We have some other parts of this puzzle that will take time to work through. So, I don't think Tim or I can really anticipate at the present time tonight what the next step after the 60 days, what that would look like. I know Tim will try to work with the city and get some idea of that decision-making process for them and what that would look like. But to think of 60 days, I'm just thinking of one thing that the board has expressed interest in and is going to talk about on November 25th, and that is community engagement and feedback from our community, which takes time, because certainly we have to organize it, we have to communicate it, we have to hold the sessions or put out a survey or whatever we're choosing to do, get it back, analyze it, and so forth. So, just thinking through that process, then there are different, there are also more work to be done on the three options as we move forward, which will take some time as well. I know this timeline has been, as Bruce has pointed out a number of times, challenging. And we also agree that it is very challenging because of all the complexity of the parts to this. Probably more complex than most other building projects. But just to give you an idea about what else can be going on during that 60-day period.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one comment, just, just back to Jamie's comment is, my only challenge is, just because we do the technical feasibility of running sewer and water out to the site, doesn't mean that actually it will happen. And the challenge is, is we don't, we don't kind of control that destiny. You know, there's a lot of unknowns still. So, it can be a long, long path, and we may not ever get the answer because it has to go, you know, it's got to go get the city council approval. And we've kind of been through that a little bit, and it's kind of, it's hard to get directional guidance because it's, they can't really do it unless they, unless they vote, so. And the fact with, with, if we did a well and we, and we able to do a septic, we're kind of more in control of the destiny, and we can move the project forward. That's my challenge is, is I agree with having options, but I'm just, I'm just concerned that we may not get the final approval, and we may have to make some decisions on how we move forward.
Thanks, Brian.
Mr. President? One more quick comment. So, good to have some spirited discussion up here. Normally, these have only been happening in work sessions, so it's nice to have some more discussion on this. You know, I, I think during our work session, we talked through this. We talked about the opportunity. Jamie, I know you talked about a million dollars. In my simple math, I think of $900,000 that we had seen before, the 1.2 along with another 300, it's not a million, but it's, it's a big number, right? So, I get the reason why we would want to do it. Personally, though, I'm not going to support spending the $12,000, and it's not because I don't think the analysis is good. I just don't think that it's going to stop there. I think Sandy brought this point up as well, but it, you know, to me, there kind of just seems to be more things that are going to need to be explored along the way. So, I understand and appreciate the desire to have the additional analysis. I think it will be good. I just really would like to see, you know, kind of that line in the sand to say, this is it. We're not going to have any more discussion on this. Once we get past this analysis, that's going to be the last dollars that the school board has to, you know, approve spending for our district, as well as, you know, allow us to kind of move forward with the rest of the activities. So, final comments, thanks.
Thank you. So, just to summarize, what I'm hearing is, is that we're concerned about the timing of this and the time, the delays that it may create at the same time. So, that's one, the one side of it. And there are other points too as well, is that potentially the city doesn't have to approve it. We haven't necessarily had great experience in the past and so forth. But the other side of it is, is that... But the other side of it is, is that it could be a major potential savings to our taxpayers as well. So that's, those are the two competing factions that I'm hearing right now. I'm intrigued by the comment that Jamie mentioned, that, that we could put some language into the response back to the city, requesting or almost saying, if you could meet this deadline, you know, we could move forward with it. But if you can't meet this deadline, whatever that deadline is, I don't know what it is. Deadline would have to be defined as a final decision, I suppose, in order for us to, to move forward with this. That would give us that, that ability to, to answer both concerns. Is that correct? Is that the way I understood it, Jamie?
Sure, sure. Mr. President, and I just wanted to make a comment. I mean, I join in everyone's concerns about timeline, because, believe me, I wanna move forward with a referendum for this school. But, in, in response to Bruce's comment about where did I get, or, you know, he didn't think it would be a million dollars, but I'm looking at the long-range costs, because if we build our own septic and, and well on there, then we, you know, there's liabilities associated with it that are hard to put dollar figures on, but I'm sure there's actuaries that can do that. But just the operating costs at thirty-five thousand a year, the estimate was twenty-five to thirty-five thousand a year, I don't know what it would be for operating costs on a city. But if we don't get this done, and we don't ask the, the city to do this analysis, we're never gonna know what the cost difference was. And I, I think that there are things we can do to move the project along, but I would like to see us, thank you for adding that point about some kind of, you know, give the city, can you meet this deadline? Cause if you can't, then we go ahead. And I agree with Brian, that if they do this, and we spend the money and have the twelve thousand, and then it turns out, oh, by the way, it will cost us much, but, and they've got all this other ramifications that end up taking us beyond our timeline, then I guess it's not gonna be considered.
Not done. So Tim, I mean, I'm putting you on the spot here in terms of this timeline, not sure exactly what that magical timeline would be necessarily. So do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think what we could do is, is look at, look a little more into the septic and the timeline there and look, and we can, we can ask the city to say, is there a, you know, what their timeline is, but they're really, it's at their discretion.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. President? Isn't it really just looking at the, the date of the referendum and working backwards from that? I mean, that's really the timeline that we're talking about here, cause I think that's the goal, is to get to that referendum point. So if we know the two dates in which we've at least preliminary put out there, maybe that could just be something for part of our next work, work session on the, at the end of the month, right?
Are you right about that? I, it seems to me like we almost have to know what the plan is before we go to referendum, right? Cause we've gotta.
Agreed.
Roll it out.
Agreed, but, but part of that is the, is the solution around water, right? So if we know what that date is, you know, we kinda need to work backwards from, from those dates, or else that will just continue to get pushed out. So that would be, again, just my, my thought process.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting tabling it then tonight, until we know that information? Or I'm not sure what you're suggesting.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm, I just think as part of our work session, that we need to understand what that timeline is.
Would it be helpful to, to table it, Tim, to kinda get an idea of, you know, and I realize the, of timing. I realize the city, I mean, the city we can go to and say, can you meet this, can you meet this deadline? If you can't, maybe that's.
I guess, yeah, based on the varying opinions tonight, maybe that was the best thing, is the table. And then I'll go back to the city and we'll discuss that and see what they think is a reasonable timeframe for them to have a decision if all points are go on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, Mr. President, just one comment. I just know how much time we spent with the rezoning with the dog track and the amount of money we spent. And, you know, my concern right now is, I think the city has some challenges. I, I keep hearing about capacity planning for their, their current water treatment. And now with the golf course, I just feel like, so we can talk more about it in, in the work session, but I really feel like this is gonna be a big challenge for us, and that's gonna really drag out this project.
Okay. So. So we've talked a lot about the issues and potential directions or suggestions and ideas. So I'll entertain a motion of, from, about any of these ideas.
I'd make a motion to table this until the next work session of the board.
Motion to table this item seven B until the next work session. That's by Sandy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. I think we probably should do a voice. Oh, I'm sorry. Any more discussion? Apologize. No? Okay, I think we probably should do a roll call of this one.
Burkey, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Trinow, aye, aye.
Bell, aye.
Johnson, no.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Good discussion, and we have another work session coming up on November twenty-fifth. Okay, moving then on to seven C, two thousand thirteen, fourteen staff salaries and wages. We'll start with Bruce and then Andrea.
Yeah, thank you. So we've had a lot of good discussions on staff salary and wages. We had some discussions during our October seventeenth work session. We also had some discussions in our personnel meeting. Again, thought these were very productive work sessions, a lot of collaboration amongst our, our board, deliberation, you know, back and forth. And, and again, these were conversations that I felt great about, you know, it was actually, I thought, some good, good work that was done. One of the things that we did as a group, we really looked at what would be the schools that we wanted to compare and do our analysis against. I thought that the ability for the board to choose those schools was something that we worked through well. We looked at neighboring schools, schools that were of similar size, and again, really put some context to what we were trying to ultimately come up with, which was, you know, a good comparative analysis that we felt comfortable about. So overall, a very good discussion, and I'll pass it off to Andrea here to, to give us some of the high-level details, again, of the hours that we've literally spent going over these details.
Thank you, Bruce. As Bruce stated, tonight I am presenting our administrative recommendation for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen salary and wage increases for eligible district employees. This recommendation has been endorsed by the Finance Committee by consensus and the Personnel Committee by a two-one vote. At the October seventeenth, a board work session was also focused primarily on this issue. Please note that the allocation of these requested dollars for salaries and wages contained in this recommendation was previously approved by the school board at its, when it certified the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget. Our primary goal with this recommendation is to increase internal and external comparability and to, to retain and attract high-quality staff in the Hudson School District, so that we are able to continue our years of unprecedented, unprecedented success for our students and our staff. There are two primary components to this recommendation. First, it is a recommendation that all eligible employees receive a two percent increase to their two thousand twelve, thirteen salaries and/or wages retroactive to July first, two thousand thirteen. The groups affected by the two percent increase include teachers, school psychologists, counselors, social workers, support staff, and then coordinators, supervisors, and administrators, other than those individuals who have a specific contract, or specific salary amount specified in their individual contract for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Benchmarks for certified staff and steps for support staff will also be honored as part of this recommendation. Second, we also identified a group of teachers who have their master's degree and who have worked for the district since at least the two thousand ten, eleven school year, whose salaries are significantly behind their internal peers with comparable education and experience. A plan has been developed to partially address these inequities based on available budget dollars, ultimately resulting in significant improvements to internal comparability. It is our recommendation that the board authorize the expenditure of these dollars to be applied by the administration towards this group of master's degree teachers on an individual basis. It is also important to note that employees with significant performance issues will not be eligible for any increase at this time. I can certainly entertain any questions.
Okay, any questions of Andrea or comments?
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Andrea, you said down here, it says employees with significant performance issues. I think I asked that question at the personnel meeting, and I, I thought what you said was employees with any performance issues will be exempt. This word significant here means something different to me than what I thought you said.
Well, I can, I can certainly define the, what we consider to be significant. It's one of four categories. As I, as we explained at the Personnel Committee meeting, it's someone who's received a discipline since July first, two thousand thirteen, someone who's on a performance improvement plan, someone who's received notice of a performance improvement plan, and then finally, a probationary teacher who has received a notice of performance concerns.
So any issues other than elevating to those four, they would still get this raise?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Clarification for me, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions regarding? Okay, I'll just comment that really what, what this accomplishes is, for the most part currently, this first phase really, is to create more equity internally with staff that have, have tenure compared to those that have entered into the school system employment recently, who are coming in at a higher level because of the, the market cost to bring these people in. So, so people understand that. I mean, I just want you to make sure you understand that. We, we still, I think, as, my opinion, still have some work to do, but I'm in favor of this, and I believe that's something that's important for us. If we are intending to be a, a, a school district of excellence, we need excellence in our teaching, and we need excellence in our staff and our administration. And I think with reasonableness and, and being responsible for, understanding the responsibility that we have for our tax, to our taxpayers, also understand the expectation of this community in terms of, of performance. And so therefore, I'm gonna vote in favor of this. Any other comments or questions?
Just one comment. I think, again, it's a, it's a big win for us, considering we were able to not only get this done, but at the same time, you know, work with improving the levy that we're passing along from two point three-four down to one point six-five. So, you know, some, some good success there as a group. And again, I, I think Andrea, the work that you did, the, the analysis that you completed, really gave us a good picture and allowed us to make good decisions as we were collaborating through this, through this decision. So, you know, thanks for all the work that you did and the analysis that you did and the depth that you went to for us to, to really look at this. So I appreciate that.
Mr. President?
Sandy.
I would just comment that, as I did at the Personnel Meeting and the budget, the last meeting when we talked about this, I have no problem with what we've done with these master degree teachers. I think we, we needed to do that. The reason I'm gonna be voting no on this is because of the two percent increase. As I've stated in the past, I have a very, very big problem with automatic across-the-board increases for all employees. So I will be voting no on this, but I want it clear that I believe what we've done with the master degree teachers was something we needed to do.
Thank you, Sandy.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Brian.
Yeah, just one comment, just to kinda echo on Bruce's, I, you know, if we're gonna have a great school system and, and kind of, you know, create a better outcome for our graduates, you know, we need great teachers and support staff and, and leadership, so this is something that I think we, we needed to do. I also like the fact that, you know, I was pretty, I pushed back in finance, on marrying her team a little bit on the, on the tax levy. I really appreciate kind of looking back at that and finding a way to, to be able to do this, but also to kind of, to reduce the levy from where it was presented in the, in the annual meeting, so.
Thanks, Brian. Anybody else?
Mr. President? I think what was compelling for me was, especially when we spent the time, and I credit Andrea for sort of looking at some specific, you know, I still have the sheet here, some, some of the specific example irregularities that we have in our compensation schedule. And to me, those are the things that, that don't make sense, and we need to be addressing those. So I agree with the changes that are being proposed.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just one clarification in my statement about the two percent increase and the cost of living increases. Without a pay-for-performance plan, that's my objection to those types of increases.
Yeah, and I, I concur with that philosophy, but in this situation, I see the two percent as being needed in order for us to get closer to a comparability with, with other similar districts. And so I'm with you, but in this situation, I see the need to have this across the board, two percent, to get the, the entire group up to a, closer to that median range, so. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the two thousand thirteen, fourteen staff salaries and wages as presented.
Motion by Lynn to approve the two thousand thirteen, fourteen staff salaries and wages as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll start down this time with Jamie.
Johnson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Trinow, aye, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Burkey, no.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is regarding the, the State Education Convention in January, January twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. I, I'm happy to announce that I'd like to present Jamie Johnson as our delegate, who I've spoken to earlier about this, and I will be attending as well, so I would serve as the alternate in case Jamie has some major case that he has to take on during that time. And I don't have anything to do on January twenty-second, so.
Does, does anybody else wanna usurp that nomination?
Mr., Mr. President, I'll, I'll make the motion to appoint Jamie as our delegate and Mr. Holland as our alternate at the convention.
Okay, motion by Dan to appoint Jamie Johnson as the delegate for the State Education Convention, January two thousand fourteen, and Tom Holland as the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, that was awfully fast.
I'm moving fast, let's move.
I don't think we need any discussion of this, do we? So, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, I'll accept a motion, I'll entertain a motion to, for the consent items, including the specific language around the expenditures.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve consent items, including expenditures in the amount of three million, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay. A motion by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We're at committee reports. We'll start with the Finance Committee meeting. Dan.
This might be one of the faster committee reports on record, but the first item, we adjourned to closed session. The second item, in that closed session, had to do with compensation of specific public employees. Next item was to review the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget adoption and levy certification, which we have covered already, and then a two thousand thirteen, fourteen quarterly financial update that Tim Erickson provided, and which revealed that we're pretty much on track with our, where we need to be both on the revenue and expenditure side with our financials.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions of Dan? And moving on to the Learning and Program Development Committee meeting, Brian.
Thanks. Learning Program Development Meeting, we met on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth. We first covered sterilized testing. Really, it was when we get requests about the tests, what's, you know, what's in the test, that we don't keep copies of these, of like the WKCE. I think the CSO office has one, if you wanna see it. It's, it's something you have to do, kind of, you have to be monitored when you look at it, and so that's come up, that's come up before, and we just covered that. The second was the school calendar. A few of us in the board have looked at the, at the last day of school, pushing into A few of us on the board have looked at the, at the last day of school, pushing into the middle of, middle of June, and wondered if we could bring that up. Well, yeah, up, forward, backwards, however, like, earlier, the first of June. And one thing that I thought was that because we had some of these late starts that we took, if we could rethink that, would that, would that help us? And it really doesn't because you have, you have contact days and you also have contact minutes. And so, so the only way to really affect the, the last day would be to really kind of think about vacation days during the school year. Do we cut some, you know, around Thanksgiving? There's a couple other days that we could cut and, or have a student contact day and move that schedule up. There's a couple other things we could do in terms of looking at the calendar. I think that, I think it was getting kind of further than we, we originally thought. We thought it was simple as looking at some of the, and we think the professional development is important too, so we're not, we're not discounting that, we're just looking at other options. So I think we kind of put it back in Mary and the leadership's camp to kind of, to think about other strategies there, so. Mary, did I miss anything there?
Well, just that we have a committee established that's going to look at the, the parent-teacher conferences and that schedule. We're not, we have some concerns about how it was handled this year, things that parents have wanted, longer time periods, and the time for teachers. You know, there's the concern about how many times can we schedule at night for availability of parents, a lot of different concerns that we want to look at as well. And that could affect, you know, moving the date up, and we're just not sure. So we're going to do that first, and then we're planning to bring it back to the committee to have further discussion.
And the other comment was we have a lot going on right now in our district, and, you know, just a little bit of priorities. And if this, if this is a big priority, then we should spend time on it, but it looks like we want to use our board work sessions for other things besides the calendar. So, you know, my, my thinking right now is we don't make this our, our big priority, and we kind of roll with what we have. So, any comments on that? Any questions?
Just the changes with the seniors.
Yeah, just, we have already, that's, we already approved that. The changes were the seniors.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Which is a one day, which was a one-year pilot, see how it goes, and then, so.
Yeah, that's what I was going to-
Versus a complete rescope of the, of the schedule, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, I, I think it's great. I think it's good you guys had that discussion. I, I agree with you. I think that it is a little bit lower on the priority list compared to some of the other items we have going on right now. But, you know, some of that was spurned by the need to have some of the kids that will have summer jobs a little bit earlier. So I, I encourage us to continue to have those discussions to try and see what opportunities are out there for us to keep shortening them.
Okay. And then the last thing was the internet resources and electronic media update that we just already had updated, so.
Okay. That's it. Thank you, Brian. Good report. Next committee was the personnel committee with Bruce.
Yeah, so I, I'm going to try and beat Dan on the time here tonight, mostly because a couple of the items we've heard from the group already. So we did have the educator effectiveness update, which Mr. Grambo presented earlier this evening, so I think we all got a chance to understand a little bit about that. We talked about the plan for support staff feedback meetings, and I think that's real positive for the administration to continue to listen to the employees and make sure that we're, we're getting feedback and, and making the updates and necessary enhancements or changes so that we've got a great work environment for our, the staff that are out there across the entire organization. So I thought that that was a very good discussion. We did have a, a short closed session to have some discussions on, you know, specific instances around staff salary and wages, but from there, really just wrapped up with, again, what we had closed with and Andrea's comments, and we took action on this evening around staff salary and wages. So overall, great meeting, and again, good collaboration, good open dialogue. I know people maybe don't always get a chance to see those discussions. They see the meeting that takes place here either, you know, while they're here or something that they're viewing at a later time. But there really are some good discussions that do take place, you know, in, in the committee meetings as well as the open session. So, you know, it's, it's not just the, the group coming up here and, and saying yea or nay. It's, it's, you know, things that we're pushing back on or having good discussion on to get us to a point where we can take action on. So overall, very good meeting.
Yeah. Thank you, Bruce. Any questions of Bruce or comments? Okay, that didn't quite beat Dan, but keep working on it. Facilities and grounds committee meeting, Jamie in my place, thank you.
Yes, facilities and grounds, I was the substitute chair for you, Tom.
I know, thanks.
And we had an agenda that, we've covered already part of it, so I'm not going to be, even try to be the briefest because you know I'm a lawyer, so I'm going to keep talking. But fundraising by booster organizations, the advertisement on signs, scoreboards, giveaways, and we were looking at revamping the policy. The policy is twenty-plus years old, and to say that there's been a proliferation of the opportunities for fundraising and advertising would be an understatement. And so what we're trying, what we're going to do is have, the administration's going to look at revamping the policy and come back to the committee with some suggestions that is workable. We, we had consensus on the committee, we don't want to discourage, you know, our, our students from being able to, you know, be marketers for themselves and to, especially when they're having these extracurricular activities and trying to self-fund those so they're not dependent on the school board, on the school district's budget. So we don't want to discourage that, but at the same time, we want to have some policies in place so that it's consistent with the themes of our other policies in our district. On safety, security plan update, you've already heard about, we approved the, supporting the partnership with the city of Hudson to put a satellite office, but that's just one piece to our safety and security plan. As this board knows, in previous meetings, there is a three-year plan in place that involves hundreds of thousands of dollars of investment in our district and in the safety of our children. So we're continuing to review and modify that three-year implementation plan. We're planning to meet with UW River Falls Police to learn from their security efforts and practices in an educational setting, conducting lockdown drills at each of the sites are being conducted. And they've already met, administration's already met with every school team about their preparedness plans, and that there's even tabletop exercises and actual full-scale onsite trainings in the works. Participants would include local law enforcement, that would be all three local agencies, hospital, EMS, fire department. So that planning is underway in addition to, you know, raising the visibility of law enforcement. The last thing was, of course, the secondary space for learning, so our committee met the very night after our last work session. I think we've covered everything under the superintendent's report, and I'm not going to have to reiterate what was said there or our discussion about bringing utilities to UU. So that's the end of the report.
What about the repair of steam line bracket?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, there was a, a repair of a steam line. We had a break at the high school. A very good report was given. There was no direct danger issues or, it was entirely safe, it's just that it was underground and it was hard to get at. If we had had snow on the ground, you would have been able to tell exactly where the steam break occurred. But I think that the cost to repair it was thirty thousand dollars, and it's something that's included in the capital budget.
Right, it's handled as a contingency, and, and the final costs haven't been determined yet, but somewhere between the thirty, thirty-five, forty, somewhere in there.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Jamie in the facilities committee? Okay, I'll entertain a motion-
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Aye.
Motion by Brian and I think a second by Dan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We adjourn. Thank you.